Manifest. Uh, we'll go with send this report of all the first. Yes, uh, we have. What the minutes but stem in there down later, so. Uh, we hired two people, uh, to. My name is SP and Charles Greystone, part-time. Work at the transfer station to fill in for. We're gonna maintain three people, full-time people. So somebody takes a vacation and they'll be filling in when Bill does not work on Sundays. So it's down to two, so one or. Charlie or Leonard, Lenny will be filling in those positions.
But point of order, you did stay full-time, none of them were full-time, just, oh, everybody knows.
Yeah. Yeah, the, uh, full-time is thirty-five hours a plus, but this. Uh, it's hard time. Everybody's part-time, but it's just more and more part-time.
We did have somebody leave.
And well. The minutes acting with them.
We had somebody leave.
One of the, uh, my next employee, he left, he put it also. Uh, make a motion to approve the manifest. Date of June sixth, twenty twenty-four, for the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Sorry.
Oh, vapor.
I.
Make a motion to approve the manifest dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the amount of. Four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents, four hundred and thirty-one thousand was. School.
Second.
On vapor.
Hi.
Make a motion to approve the. Selectmen minutes for, uh, the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All vapor.
I, five.
Right, next appointments, Wayne.
Yes.
No.
Thanks, Peter.
Yes, please.
Hi, uh, my name is Wayne Moulton, uh, I'm a seventy-seven-year-old vet with brain fog, so I had to bring notes here this time.
Thank you for your service.
My problem is, I bought a piece of land from the town of Effingham. Four years ago at auction. Uh, the town advertised it, and so I bought it. And, uh, it's a piece of land to acre pieces in. Address is forty-two Morris Avenue. And, uh, that's a subdivision which was approved by the town. In nineteen eighty-four, five years ago. Okay, yeah, all right. Uh. We were gonna build, this is my wife. Uh, we've been married fifty-five years.
Congratulations.
I don't know if it's gonna work anymore.
And let us know in the next twenty-five years.
I don't think you'll be trading in.
My problem is getting title insurance. Uh, and, um. Town took the land for that taxes.
Okay.
Okay, and the guy. Who. The problem was with the town felt that he was exempt from paying taxes. Because. He represented a group called Executive Sources. Um. The case went to court. And Effingham won. Okay, I even have a copy of the notice of Superior Court here, if I can see it. Uh, this guy was, um. Very colorful, in many cases. He also, if you Google him, you'd find out that he had. Uh, similar problems with Dover, Rochester, Farmington, and even in Maine. Okay. Now, he disappeared. Uh, from this area well over five years ago, the last anybody can. Find, he was in Texas.
Good.
And I have a friend who's a law officer, and he's been helping me, we Googled and whatever, and. He's not in this area anymore, okay? The problem is that the law says that Effingham. Was to pay. Any extra money that you collected, like from me buying it. That was over the amount that was due to him, taxes. Okay, so, um. And I, I talked it with the, um. Down clerk and tax collector here, um, Alan Curtis, very helpful, and he. Went back and. Uh, he even found the paperwork. Uh, the figures that they had done on the amount that they owed. The guy's name that I was talking about owned it was Mr. Wobble. But he can't find where the check was ever issued. From the town Effingham to him, or where it was ever cashed.
How much was it?
Um. You, you, I'm sorry, man, I'm sorry. I'll give it to you in a second.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um. But can't find where the check was ever issued, and the town lost other paperwork to besides. So. I. Spent a ton of money with a town attorney, uh, not a town attorney, an attorney. And they said my only two options, uh, what's called a quiet title action. Which can cost well over ten thousand dollars and, and can take many, many months. Or, um, if I could locate the guy. And get him to sign off saying, hey, I no longer have, that would be another option, those are the only two options I had.
Correct.
So. Uh. Now I can't get. Any title insurance to get a bank loan or to sell the property or anything, so what I'm here for is to ask you guys. Uh, is there any way that you could help me? Or have. A talk with the town attorney, I couldn't go give town attorney, but you guys could. I, I just don't. Don't know how to handle it, it's a strange case, I'm not blaming anybody.
So you have the person's name, and you have this location in Texas, correct?
Uh, no, I just, what we Googled, my wife, she's got over the computer and we found out that the guy's mother passed away, and he was there for the funeral, that's all we got.
Well, you have his full name.
Yes, Paul Wobbe, yeah, and it's on all the legal. Paperwork from Superior Court, where the town won.
Do legal, can you do the first?
Uh, no. I don't know. Yeah. What's that?
Well, we have to try to locate.
This is actually right out of the file. Um. From the. Alan Curtis gave me those papers. That's where the town figured out.
So you paid.
I paid, um, fifteen-plus thousand dollars. And I've paid, I've paid the taxes for the last four years of taxes, apparently.
And the value was thirty-five thousand five hundred.
It's not about the values.
No, you, you.
Minus ten.
No, so if he owed us six thousand dollars, and he, he was the highest bidder, and he paid fifteen, the difference between the six and the fifteen. By law is supposed to go to the previous owner, I know it doesn't make sense, but once there is, is. Is the town, the town due is there, they're supposed to get the extra.
I'm just putting a value here.
Yeah.
I saw that. So you're saying this number right here. It's a tax to lean.
Yes, so he. He technically should, he should have gotten a check of nine thousand, because he owed us six, and you paid fifteen thousand four fifty-two.
Exactly. Exactly.
It's Matt Bush and.
Yeah. Man. So after I spoke to Mr. Moulton yesterday, Michelle and I could look back, we did not see any record that that gentleman was paid.
Exactly, that's my whole problem.
It, yeah, so it's a question for Matt, because obviously. I know what you were thinking is. You know, we find him to sign off on it, but we technically were the last owner, because we took ownership back from the property.
We didn't do our job by cutting the check and getting everything.
Yeah. I went through this year-to-go experience.
Like I said, he has through many other towns, same thing, lawsuit. And he lost them all, but. Long.
Yeah, I say we.
But what, what can Matt do to help us on this, what, what is his expertise to?
He's got the judge expertise and his legal system that we don't have access to on ours. Same with men. I wouldn't have access that he would have. He would have access that we don't, and I would have access to him, like. Without knowing the safety of the other life.
He would know the laws.
Well, uh, yeah, then I would, okay, I would agree to go forward with that, but understanding that. Provided some information, can each find this guy, and you know, I don't want to waste a lot of hours on this. With that. Going there, I would have to.
I bet if you had friends in the FBI and CIA, you could find him.
I'll see what I can do. To. Find this guy.
And Matt should be able to provide us that, if he has the capabilities of finding it.
He does have capabilities.
Well, I like that, hey, here that's all.
Okay.
You agree.
Yeah, I think we need to contact Matt, I don't think that, I personally, if the town. In two thousand and sixteen, if I'm seeing that correctly, dropped the ball, then. He shouldn't be penalized for that.
Correct.
I mean, he did us a service by. Paying, paying it, putting it back on the road, rolls, and paying his taxes the last four years, and. I don't feel that they should be penalized for that.
I'm always demanding anything, I'm just, I just ask you guys if you had some ideas, and if you could help me.
No, we appreciate it.
I, I'm not.
We're good.
Uh, pushing in any way, shape, or form.
Contact Matt, Matt, make sure, have an understanding as far as what his capabilities of. Finding, you know, to locate a person.
Yeah.
And. Give us a feedback.
So, so you do have contact with your town attorney at times, and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Run that by him, that, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah.
That's.
Okay.
You want a copy of that, that paper off?
Yes.
You, you do have one in your file.
You probably need this for the lawyer.
Okay, so that.
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah, I won't take up any more of your time, but I.
Uh, this way, too. We appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Tyler.
If the town attorney is on your, if I can help out that way, just let you know, I'll see what I can do, and just.
This is from, uh, the Superior Court.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll give her a copy.
Can we go to court?
It's just.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's why I did.
She's thought of connections.
She's retired.
As a town, probably connections. Come on. Yeah, he doesn't have any actual things to do with it all in Texas, and where's, wants to see if they have a phone number listed.
Ah, no kidding. Were in Sheen Field Agent or?
Actually, we're working out in, uh, Fort Anthony.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can just do what I can. And that, and that would not be outside your jurisdiction, like, call like that.
Yeah. Where, in New York?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she probably knew, she probably knew, uh, mostly grandma and then, because she, Marcy worked for border patrol for. Just on the, out of our port, Port Michigan.
Yes, please.
Michigan.
Okay. Yeah. Right.
Right, so we'll be in touch, Mr. Moulton. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We have some contact information.
Yes, yes.
Good luck, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Um, next, we're waiting for Rebecca. I'm in the zone. We're gonna bring her in ahead of time, she's gonna, she has appointments later, so.
She might be tied up.
At five.
She's on her way, she's gonna open back one.
Can I just ask you a little question about this? I'm surprised that there's no big attached to the, uh, money that the, uh, town collects, because it's gone through a whole bunch of. Costs along the way to get to that point. Otherwise, I guess six thousand dollars in back taxes, right? I'm surprised there isn't a percentage on top of that. That the town would get reimbursed for all of the. Paperwork, all of the phone, anything that was involved in getting to that point. Where they like to. Take the property. What was I saying?
Hmm, yeah, we, uh.
Should be some costs that could be.
We looked into that in class, I mean, there was a profit or something like that. Caitlin, uh. Remember, we were, uh, taking over a property, and we're looking at this. Uh, the person who's been repurchased property, and we couldn't, there was a lot of things we couldn't charge. Uh, your time.
Yeah, so. My time is one that can't be, um, count or charged for, um. I think that was the main one.
Yeah, it was like slot hours there, paperwork, stuff like.
I would like, I would like to make a. A suggestion. Did you enact? A stipulation to anything like this moving forward? Let's say ten percent.
Yeah, it's prescribed by law.
By law, it's ours, eh?
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
So they don't allow you to.
Don't answer them.
For anything.
There, there's only certain expenses that we can recoup as part of.
Right.
Back taxes and collecting the back taxes, going through an auction. And dislodging of it, and anything that's above that, and what the people paid has to go back to the previous owner.
Right.
Sounds like, sounds like they hold the. Town hostage and sell their property for. You know? Yeah, I can't get a real, it's only there ahead of the time, but.
Okay, so, moving forward. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi.
You're.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
I'm up, you're welcome, no problem, I put one for myself, and with no problem to. Print a copy for Caitlin to duplicate or whatever. So. Um. Happy to answer any questions, I mean, you've got, you've got the report, um.
Just give us an update. How's your month going, how's everything?
Um, actually, I had quite a few permits in, uh. In, uh. In May, um, I think, I think fifteen, um. We had three permit extensions, which is probably the most permanent extensions I've done since I've been here. Which would seem to indicate that we're still struggling with people. Um, dealing with lumber prices, so they're putting things off and doing it later. Or trouble finding professional help, so they're putting it off and doing it later.
That's right.
Yeah, it seems to be sort of part of the. Our part with, part of the course now, um. Had quite a few new driveway permits, we have had, we had had a couple of new. Subdivisions in town, and the lots are getting developed. Um, fairly rapidly.
Is that the one on Green Mountain?
There's, there's one on Green Mountain Road there, and then there's Lisa Gardella's down in, uh, off Bailey Road.
I'm like the one on one fifty-three by the cars, Herto.
Oh, Hotel, yeah, yeah, that one, so there's. So there are those three, yeah, the, the Green Mountain Road one was a hotel one as well, I think.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
But maybe I'm wrong, but anyway, that was only, that was only like a three or four lot subdivision, four lots, I think, the original three new.
That was actually Ron, uh. Ron Evans.
Oh, oh, Evan, that was Evan, then the, then the hotel one down by another road, and then the Gardella one down off Bailey Road. So. Um, you know, to have ones that are multiple lots, as opposed to just one. Lot going to two is, uh, just indication of how much maybe we are doing. In terms of what's going on. Um, but most of the. My experience with, with most of this is that the people have been very good about providing. Everything that we need. To move permits through. Um, take care of the information. Um. You know, they're getting subject designs in a time and fashion, and I'm getting that information, and so. Um, that, you know, the permitting process is all going. Pretty smoothly.
Awesome. So you have a campground structure?
Uh.
Um, this. Report.
Yeah, a campground structure is when you're at either us province. What, what was province sure is these are the people that, that's my five o'clock, they called me earlier, they were lost. They don't see the note on the door. Um, a campground structure is when someone has a camping site in one of our big campgrounds, we don't require permits to move RVs or anything. Because that's part of the right of the ownership of the campground, but if they want to put a canopy over the. Over the, the camper itself, or they want to put on a little porch or a deck. Um, or, or a little room, that's called a campground structure.
Got it.
Yeah, it's just sort of a generic to cover all of it, the detail would show, um. Uh, nature, one here. You know. Um. Oh, yeah, it's, so that, that's one, um, roof. Your square footage of the roof, and then the, uh. Square footage of the, um. Of the additional room. Um, that's over on four oh one. Right, back up way down four at one eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um. They're, they're limited to six hundred and forty square feet. Of coverage.
Okay.
Good. Um, do we want to talk about the road?
Uh, oh. Uh.
Thunder, no, no.
Yeah, there's a snowboard. Go ahead and get there.
But. We, we.
Here, I heard.
What about, I guess, because we already talked about it.
Yeah, but we didn't approve it, right, we gotta, we gotta.
She's gotta go do a field.
So, so you want me to do a field trip on that and see?
Yeah, that's, the last month we talked about that, you were gonna try to schedule and.
And do a final, to see if it warranted, okay, I, I didn't do that, but.
That's right, it's.
Yeah. That's what, that was my memory, was that we talked about that.
I think we talked about it, but I may not have taken the note.
Yeah, I remember we talked.
Yeah, and that was, yes.
I just assumed that you had. Done it, so.
Okay, I will do that.
And just so you guys know, I did reach out to Rebecca, well, I called her last night, she called me back today, um, because I noticed that there was. Uh, one property that had been ongoing that wasn't on here, um, that I felt, um. Needed more attention, because it, it, to me, appears to be a growing problem, that's forty-four, Camping Hill Road.
Um. So I will, I, I pulled the property card on that, and I will do. I will do a drive-by of it, so that before I, I, I have email. Um, contact with that owner. So, I started writing the emails, and I thought, no, I'm gonna do a drive-by first, and. Take a, take a look at it.
No. No, forty-four. It's not on there.
It's not on there.
It's on the previous.
Oh.
It wasn't on there.
It's been off and on for years and years and years, and, uh, I took it off because I'd had a very good email exchange, you know, a month or two ago. With the owner and thought that they were taking care of it, and, uh, I hadn't gone out and checked it, and then Chris brought it up, so. I'm, uh.
Pretty obvious.
Yeah, I'll do a, I'll do a cruise by.
I don't know if you gentlemen have taken notice of it, but it's.
Get pretty bad.
Sense the communication, it seems like the individual, the tenants have doubled down, and now it's starting, sorry. Now it started to, uh, collect refrigerators and appliances, and that. For reference, the inside is very similar. Obviously, fire protection concerns with that property as well.
Right. So, okay.
So, and, and I did, and I'm gonna ask you again, just so you gentlemen know, I did ask Rebecca when she reaches out via email to try to get a phone number. So that maybe that'd be more of an expedient conversation to have, and then these gentlemen can have it through to talk to the, the actual owners of the property.
So those, uh, people are looking there, just.
Yes.
Yes.
The owner that's not there.
Correct. Georgia?
Oh, you've got a, you've got a phone number for them. Okay, yeah.
Right on.
Yeah, and what's interesting is he's not, he's not listed as the owner, it's a wife to twist the owner, so there's another. Back and forth thing going on. Um. So those are two properties I need to follow up on. Uh.
The junkyard on, uh, Channing Hill and Townhouse. It looks like. The what's up was from the day of the January. Do you know anything that's happening or gonna happen?
Uh, for the.
Further discussion.
Ah, um, I got, I got, as I've said there, I've got no response from emails sent to them.
All right.
So, if, if, so here, here's the, here's the situation, if I, if, if you gentlemen. Or if I observe, but especially if you gentlemen say, I think I see a problem property, will you reach out to the owner? Um, obviously, I can drive by and observe from the road, but if we want a more detailed observation, then I would have to go on the property, I reach out. Reach, I'm reaching out with them, I don't have a phone number. Or.
You do have phone numbers in these people.
Right, but I also have email and have had me email exchanges with them over the years, these are people that I've known for. Twenty years.
Better, also from the road, you can also see.
Right, but. Right, but the point is, if you're getting no response.
She needs direction from us.
I need direction from you, if I'm getting no respect, response, my usual process would be to reach out to someone to go on the property, to make a report of the. Conditions, to give them a warning that the conditions are not acceptable. To then follow up a month later and say, are you doing it, and then follow a month later with a notice of violation. And I'm not, I'm loath to do that without going on the property, without going on the property. You know, I, I, I'm not comfortable doing a notice of violation.
So, what's, what's happening with you though?
No, I think we have to do the normal process.
Right.
Follow the normal process, make the contact.
Right, but if they don't respond.
Right, if they don't respond, yeah, they respond, so what do you want, what's the next step?
See, see, previously, before we got into. Uh. A problem with going on the property is if a property was in violation, given that. My understanding of the statute is that I can go up the driveway. Then I would do that, and then let's not get in an argument about that at the moment, but, uh. But we all know that, that UPS and the census and all sorts of people come up the driveway to your house, and it was my understanding that you could go up the driveway to a house of someone. If. The board of selectmen had decided that I cannot do that, then there's no way I can go on property and do inspections, and there is no way that I can. Tell someone that they're in violation if I've only observed it from the road, I don't get back.
So what's the escalation process we usually use in the past?
If I.
There was two or three attempts over a period of time.
Yeah.
And then after the attempts failed, it became a legal letter?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. We just use the normal process.
Right, but my first, my first. Notice would be based on. An observation of the property, not just from the road.
So this, so there was an observation on the property and pictures taken by Mr. Heinz.
Sorry, but you already have that.
Okay.
If, if you don't have that, we will.
No, I, I have those, I just was waiting for. Uh, I was waiting for a response, because I did do what I call letter number one, or. What's up?
It's not the letter.
It's what's up, it's basically what's up, warning and notice of violation, it's.
And you shed the time on it to, for sure.
Yeah.
Response, you know, move up the ladder to the next level.
Probably run it a month.
Okay, well, we're six, we're six months now.
Well, that's fine, just asking, it's like, I just kind of was curious.
Well, you know, when you're sending. Sending notices to. Members of the community who are serving on town boards.
Doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
It's still.
All right.
Everybody, I mean.
We're all treated equal, right. No preference. Yeah, and so. This. The individual did come into a meeting. And things were improving. And we've had this conversation in this forum already, so, so now we're at that point where, like I told you on the phone. We need to escalate, because things are going backwards again, so.
Okay, I'm, okay.
Yeah, you can see.
I'm a firm believer, as long as people are working toward it, we can work within.
Right.
Yes. That, it's when we don't get any action whatsoever.
Yep.
And then, and things were improving.
But now it's all in that, now it's going back, and that's, that's where we're at.
I'm the letter number two. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.[1743.77] I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Oh, come on.
I was thinking there was something else, but.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca.
Yep. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Next is a review of mail. Uh, we had a. Letter come in from North Conway Water Precinct. Concerning a second disposal.
So it appears in the past, we have had agreement, an an ongoing agreement with the North Conway Water Precinct District for um. Waste water treatment disposal. So when local um. Companies take something. And they transport it up the North Conway and dispose of it. Um, we get noted with that. By being part of an agreement with the water district, they can actually go after federal grants to improve their entire process and system. Doesn't cost us a dime, but because we do generate some of that waste, we would be part of the aggregate. Relative to their volume, which potentially gives them more money from a grand standpoint. So this is a renewal of that standing agreement that does not cost us. Well, and it potentially helps them out in getting rid of our waste.
It's real for me.
Oh, I would say you do.
Yeah, and and if if I may add to that, fur- further in that documentation, it we're not committed. So if you call, if you call. A septic company DJs or Lake Region or whatever, they're not bound to take the waste by assigning it. It just affords them. The ability to accept our waste from whatever private contract we use, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I can motionally. Set this.
Signing agreement.
Assigning agreement with this epic disposal with North Conway Water. Deliberate.
Yep.
And next is a board of selection records. Which one you guys want to go first?
Chuck always goes first.
Okay. So um, over the weekend, uh, there was a an accident down on one fifty three. At the same time, up near Leo's house on Townhouse Road. There was a electric wire that fried some of the. Fiber internet lines, which caused issues with internet and phone. So transfer station was out and library was out. Um, that was fixed earlier today. Um, the library. Started to get together the um, agreement for the three computers. Um, but the person in charge of that, which was Grace, was down here working all day with. Chief Eldridge on a police grant, so she was not able to complete that for tonight. We'll be ready for the next meeting. Phone lines. Question for you. Uh, last night's historic district inheritance commission meeting. We were updating some policies, procedures and things like that, and we listed fax number in there. Five, three, nine, seven, seven, nine, nine. We rang that for. Well, we stopped at the end of two and a half minutes and just kept ringing. Um, I'm not even sure it's live anymore. Going to anything, because I'm not sure we have a fax machine hooked up, do we?
I don't have one in my office, no.
That's antique.
Um, which means we're probably still paying for it. Or we should probably check and see if we're still paying for it.
There there are a few lines there. It says we have one and we do not.
In in the in the submission of paperwork, it says you can submit stuff by fax. And we were updating the policy, so we. They asked me last night if we had a fax machine. That wasn't the way we did. So Mike Conti sat there and dialed a number and we just sat there for two minutes and listened to it ring. And it never answered anything. So it didn't say it was. Not in use, which tends to make me believe it's still a live number coming in here, but um.
And in in that discussion, didn't we have, uh, we consolidated, we got like twenty lines coming in here? And do we know, do we use all these lines or I mean?
It's actually on our to do list is to so do an inventory audit on our phone lines because we believe that we're still paying for. The phone line that back when they used to do the video, you could you could phone in and listen to the selectmen meeting. We believe that that's possibly what one of those numbers I were paying for.
And I know we had kept a copper line there way back when because Randy had wanted to keep it for the EMS service.
And there's no doubt over.
And it's nothing there anymore, so.
So how do we go about? I mean, I understand what the packs we got, you know, but we should try to do all this at once, try to.
Caitlin confronted the entire list of every phone number we have.
On that topic real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt. I rattled cages about the fiber of the internet being out on Townhouse Road the other day. And Ian Silverman is actually our account manager for everything. So these issues we've been having with lines down, he's actually the guy. I found that out yesterday. I wish I had known that all along because I would have been rattling this cage all along. I thought he was just stealing the phone. But it turns out he's actually our entire account rep for the town. So I now have a guide of all consolidated for all of our.
He should produce a list of phones.
With that being said, out of my conversation with him yesterday, he wants to come in and meet with the town to update and. Figure out and talking all of this stuff could be a good. Uh, agenda for the.
So can we get a list ahead of that?
Yeah. Absolutely.
No, we should be able to call him and just.
We're delegating that to you.
Yeah, if we could set up a meeting, Dick, if you think that that's be the best way we can. And have an open dialogue about. The importance of certain things. I mean, obviously, fire department didn't have a phone number. There's no cell service in South Hingham. People down there still rely on landlines and it was they who without a phone. Transfer station, if anybody got hurt there, they couldn't reach out. They would have to drive somewhere um. From my standpoint, as safety standpoint, and I'm, yeah, obviously you guys as well, it's unacceptable.
He listened to me complain for quite a while. Heading back to the microverse.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just because we're on that topic, I'm gonna jump into. Uh, one of my reports. So I had stated that I was gonna clean up the phone wire that from when waste management I started to. And I'm like, no, there's no way. There's hundreds of, there's pieces of telephone poles. There's the boots and everything else. I couldn't cut the key. I had bolt cutters, cable cutters. You needed a combination of everything to.
Complained about that to him too.
I mean, I got some of it cleaned up, but I'm like, no, I don't have enough. Free time in my life to sit here and and I tried to consolidate some of the cable, but some or some of it's still hooked.
So hinging on Chris's comments, so I know Phineas is a subsidiary and it's a separate subsidiary for the fiber internet. When they start wiring the town this fall. Things like this, where they've had accidents in the past that they've left stuff on the ground. I'm thinking we get a hold of Ian and say, uh, how do we marry the two together? So while you guys are out here with your different crews. You're cleaning up your former mess.
Some of those things be cleaned up sooner than that.
Well, I'm gonna say that, but.
Yeah.
Jim, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to comment that if you want to keep your fax capability, highly likely, but your copy machine over there has a fax interface in it. And there are some legal documents that they they say you know, we send by fax.
The new, the new printer is hooked up to the internet. Probably has an incoming fax capability. We're automatically same file.
Well, maybe, but a- also a lot of them have a fax interface card, which is basically to take a phone line.
So I think we can get the. But we can run all these questions. Picking up the.
Yeah, and and have both you guys. Oh, yeah.
So you'll consolidate, it should be able to send a tech out to verify the uh. Doing audit. On everything coming in.
Yeah, I just. I know you want to.
Worked from a year ago. I used to have to go out to different places and. audit was coming into them.
Well, I rely on JT to get the info.
Thank you. Photocopy fee policy, do we have one? And do we charge fees for photocopying if the public wants to have some photocopy?
You talking physical copies or scanned copies?
Physical copies.
I don't know about the policy necessarily, but in the Board of Select office, there is a little price tag where it says copies are two dollars.
So the reason I'm at is this couple of reasons why I'm asking a question. So here the note of question came up. And rather than trying to get involved with coming up with a price tag, we just adopted whatever the county charges for. Their schedule of of printing would be acceptable within the within the state, so we did that. Um, there's some stuff that's floating around out there right now around some new ninety one A requests within our legislature. Which if it is passed, means anybody from anywhere in the world can submit a request for us. To pull together information and we have to print it if they want it printed. At our cost, if we don't have a schedule of printing costs.
It's not approved yet, right?
It's actually been through one side and it's going through the second side. But makes no difference. We should have a policy anyway.
I I agree with you on that.
So.
I can verify first, make sure there isn't.
Okay.
I haven't seen one personally, but I can at least um, look at it for. To see if we have one. If we do, afford it to.
Good. If we don't, can we pull a county one and see what county registry is doing in there, pretty. Copy. I mean, they've got, they had like a schedule of four or five different covers for different things of different volumes and. Like three or four copies or five copies, but anything after that was.
County registry, the county.
County deeds, I think is what it was. County deed office.
How excited are you? We have a policy that covers ninety one A requests and the the actual gathering of the documents, what we can charge for that.
Why we can't charge the other lot? The gather the information, you can't charge.
We can charge if we've got a print it, we can charge for.
That's it.
But that's it, but our time behind it is.
The time is.
What if it's a non ninety one A record request? So I took four record requests just this week for car crashes. And I think you took all four of the same ones.
So I get it. Do you get it? Alexis, next you do. So they. They sent a check. The cover, usually the cost of a report, usually an actual reports. My finding wire reports like three pages.
But years ago. And we used to get requests for reports. We had a fee attached.
Yeah.
If if an insurance company or if somebody wants a report, it was a fee attached to get that report. And we set the fee.
Yeah. We have a fee schedule for ours up to some maybe, I can't remember, some I had, you know.
But I would say researching within the, within each of them and find out.
Yeah.
Just to see what other things have done or call over the departments and find out what they're doing.
I would assume we should just follow the same schedule.
But I mean, we're not the first ones ever asked this question, so.
Um, so I can just offer. The school district. Deals with ninety one day requests all the time and there are people who are weaponizing that as a, you know, means of that. And one of the things that we did, oh, I'm sorry, did I see?
No, no, just.
Oh, um, one of the things we did and. They have a right to examine the records. So our policy of the school district is they have to physically come down to the S A U office. Then they can request copies. So there's none of this like, I'm sending in my request, make me a bunch of copies and mail them to me. We can impose that requirement. It's like, you want to see these records? Great, come on down. You know, and and we found that that really short cutted a lot of these frivolous requests. Where it was basically just like, you know, we just.
I think we do that right now, the planning board with the meanest, with the meanest stuff right now, they have a. Box back there that. They come in and look at it first.
I'm just saying, if you start getting these requests from people for volumes of records and it's some kind of Louisiana who's doing it.
Do you, do you guys have that written down in a policy document somewhere?
I agree with you, dude. I can, I can see if you have it happen for you.
If you could.
Yes.
That would help us.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Guess you are gonna have a meeting in July.
No, you have to wait till September. So, Chris, you uncover anything on roads today in yours?
Yeah.
Good, I got a road thing, so I'll add it to yours when you. We'll get the road discussion.
Sure.
Um. Roofing, um. So we have a company by by the name of James and Whitney Company come out, give us a proposal for a library real estate. I know JP. Got a proposal for for the insurance claim. On the fire station roof. Um, due to the size of the proposal, we according to our procurement policies, we've got to do an R P, put it out, advertise it. Statewide, locally. Thirty days um, and then proceed. Um, because of the. Preservation guidelines for repairing that roof, it added like eighty one in the cost. Only like thirty three grand at this point, and it's only repairing the front half of the tower. Um, there's pictures included with the proposal. When you. Go take a look at that in the last year. When you're standing on the townhouse side from Mike Conti's house, looking up at the tower. The shingles in that entire area are completely curled up. And they're just dropping out. Maybe some of them don't even look like they're even nailed. Um, a couple of them on the ground, the nail holes are three inches above the nailing line. Um, I'll pop together an R P and. Minister Caitlin, we'll discuss it next meeting and we'll put it out, but we've got. We've got no shingles on one section of the roof, so the water is going directly in the roof. And the shingles that are having an issue are also unfortunately over the Masonic temple, which is the. Historic murals that need to be protected to itself.
So where would it come out? The thirty three thousand or whatever.
Building maintenance.
Oh, so you've got above to the.
Invisible buildings.
What's what's the number?
Forty nine sixteen stumble. It's just such ten grand, but doesn't tell, doesn't tell the account.
Invisible building repair maintenance sixty seventy eight thousand.
Well, I'm sure we had it covered.
So the the key things that I learned is there does not appear to be any underwainment under the shingles. They look like they were nailed directly to the old. Whiteboard roof. Um, no water shield on the edges of some of the areas, so that was never done. The insurance companies now to do any kind of warranties wanna have put in a requirement, you gotta do. Either an OSB or or a plywood deck. Um, to go on it. The warranties are thirty years in that neighborhood. For what needs to be done. Um. Flashing, there doesn't appear to be any flashing on the backside of the tower that you can see. And this would include adding flashing on three sides of the tower. Um. If there's any fascia board rot, it's replacing the fascia board rot.
Well, did Jim, you just had to place painted, would there any notice on that?
It wouldn't mention, but when these guys start lifting everything up. Cause it, the I looked at the drone picture we had shot two and a half years ago. On that, where that front one is missing above the Masonic symbols. It looks like it was missing three years ago, so it's been gone a while and is bare wood. So the water's been going down inside the building there for three years.
Okay.
So.
So we gotta get an R P going?
I'll get an R P going and then once we agree on the R P, then we have to put it out to public notice according to our procurement policy.
Your bother, yeah. Yeah, it's over ten, so.
Yeah, over fifteen.
Over fifteen is. And if you actually look at the two thousand and. No. Whatever year that was. Remember, I asked you guys to give you a homework assignment, don't give the wording in that. It says construction right in the warrant article. That would be construction, it's a repair maintenance. Just throwing it out there.
Okay. Um. Let's see, Police Department Grace worked with Chief Eldridge today on the on a grant submitted that. Will submit the Muth Play uh, Arts Culture Grant this week for twenty grand for the. Bathrooms at the uh, library. The wiring projects begun in the tower of the library. Um, they pretty well got the conduit overrun on that, just got running wire next week. And um. As I mentioned last meeting, the New Hampshire Gives fundraiser for Effingham Preservation Society for the bathrooms. Um, starts tonight, actually started twenty minutes or nineteen minutes ago. Uh, five o'clock today until five o'clock tomorrow. The first fifteen hundred dollars of donations is matched dollar for dollar for every donation over twenty dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. Chris.
Uh, so we already talked about the phone line, phone line that I couldn't uh. Or I didn't get all cleaned up. Um, obviously, you guys have probably seen by now, I got the sign back up on the end of.
Or I didn't get all cleaned up, um, obviously you guys have probably seen by now, I got the sign back up on end of. Plantation Road. Uh, have a resident that lives on Pine River Road, the Tobins. And they are one of two Effingham residents that are on the Ospe Waterline. Cause the Ospe, the town of Ospe, the water line runs to.
Right across the driveway or something?
Uh, no, it's actually on the other side of Pine River Road because they have that easement, which we've talked about, road reconstruction project.
Yeah.
Um. And it's uh, the shut off is in Arrowhead Drive and their water line needs to be replaced. To replace that water line. They need to dig up our road.
Wow, we'll get into the pavement. That one. I don't think that that's gonna try to put, I don't think that's gonna stop the wolves. That's gonna, we're sort of potholes are.
Yeah, no, unfortunately it's not.
How long, how big a stretch they need to dig up, like was?
It's like the culvert, basically across the road.
Essentially, yeah, they gotta go all the way across the road, yeah, so the water shut off is at the intersection of Arrowhead Drive. Um. And unfortunately. I know it's the town of Ospe. Thing, water and sewer, it's been that way for years, the homeowners are responsible for the shut off for the house, for the meat or whatever. And in this instance. It's a great distance, um. And uh. So the water shut off is all the way across the. You know, on the other side of the road, intersection, our drive, Pine River Road, so.
Okay.
So they, um. While we're in the interrupted text message I got was from um, the the resident stating that, you know, they reached out and. Um, unfortunately, they need permission from us to.
Here to road it.
Ten to road it, go across the road.
I know, it's in such great shade.
I mean, I'm glad they're bringing it up this year. You know, a couple years from now, once it's all paved up, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Chris, can they move the uh water shut off while they're doing this?
They can't, no.
No?
No, cause the, that's, the, the shut off is tied into the main, would be tied into the main line, so. And. To move it would. Move it in, move it in Effingham again. You can't do that, so I mean, just the fact that. And I'm sorry, I'm. Just the fact that it's um. You know, it's a weird circumstance, it's a very strange circumstance because obviously the Effingham residents, and there's only two of us. Himself and the next door neighbor, the little camper, his own Ospe's.
So weird circumstances that can be, we're uh rectified.
Well, I can, they can put a well in, but. That's the other option.
The other option is they could put in a well. So uh. Uh, believe it or not, a lot of people like having that guarantee of, you know, of of water and that's essentially purified and it's pressurized and. Um. You know.
So, one question I have is town Ospe, you're gonna. Make sure it's, you know, repack and pay.
The town of Ospe isn't gonna do it, it's gotta be a private contractor. That's the point, that's. That's, that's the issue, the homeowner is responsible for from the shut off to the, for the home.
So we need to. Do we need the insurance or any of that stuff?
Oh, we need, we need insurance from the contractor, yeah.
Yeah. And.
A lot of work's going on, I mean, the other, the, the danger, how long is it gonna take to dig it and?
Yeah, so there's a lot of questions, so.
So I mean, it's like, if it's a case where it's gonna be like three days worth of digging, then dig half the road, do your thing, and dig the other half of the road, do your thing. Down for three days.
Yeah, and unfortunately you can't do that, so. Cause the water line.
Okay.
It's, it's not like a culvert where you put in half the culvert and then you backfill it and then. Dig up the other side, it's a water, so.
So he's gonna try and shut the road down as well.
We didn't find out.
So I will, I will inquire. You know, he's obviously gonna have to get a contractor, so. Uh, figure out what the, what the plans are, I mean, there are instances where they do more. Without having to dig up the water line, and I would hope that, or think that that would be the cheapest route, so I'll probably steer him in that direction.
Yeah.
Um, they did that on Route sixteen, they put a line under Route sixteen, two years ago. Um, Ospe Water and Sewer did. It was the line that actually feeds this line.
Okay, so we'll put it on hold until we have all the information back.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll talk to.
Against it.
Yeah.
But we just gotta try and make sure it's done efficiently and.
Yeah.
Any bit of insurance and.
Yeah, okay, but I have to get the contractor information and. Uh, so that's that, and roads, so um, some of the dirt piles. Um, that have been accumulated from doing the ditching and and I'm gonna call it de-leaving, that's a term from. The highway department from many, many years ago, cause you get leaves and stuff in the ditch, it make, doesn't make good road bed. But anyway, some of the piles been picked up. Um, Moody Road has been graded, um, unfortunately, a greater operator, um. This had some back issues, so can't stand the machine for a very lengthy, you know, very long, so. Um, hopefully he's on the mend and feeling better, um. They are aware of the cold patch and the ever-growing potholes on Pine River Road, um. Drake Road. And Champion Hill, um. You're out, you know, after our last meeting and uh, it, it, your comments didn't go unnoticed, Steve, so. Um, there are some, some dandies on Drake Road too that need to be addressed, um, and they have those, they had that list and it's written down and. I, again, um. Not to completely throw our contractor under the bus, but. You know, he said right now, right in our words, if it, his words right here in our meeting, um, if it's not an emergency. Um, he'd get to it when he gets to it, unfortunately, it's. You know, sometimes there are gaps in when things get done, so. But I'll reach out again and. And um. See what the progress is and get a status report, and if you have a road thing. While I'm reaching out.
Yeah, so um, with Elm Street. Just send the lines cracking in pretty good places in certain areas, and I had a. My neighbor who's been in the paving business for forty years said to me this weekend, how come we're not exercising a warranty to have fixed? And I said, I have no clue what you're talking about, but I'll bring it up at the meeting tonight. Um. Apparently, when. The road separates within the, the year that it's down. They basically, under warranty, basically have them come back and actually have to grind it. Well, eighty, eighteen inches on either side of it and repaint it to seal it. Um, I took a good look between the bridge and Pine River this weekend. And there's some pretty good one-inch cracks that are filled with sand where they, it's already separated in pretty good shape. So. I don't know what you had in warranties or anything when you did.
It's the same language, but I, I blocked it and I had a paving expert because. Um, the gentleman we were discussing earlier. Um, he, he brought up concerns about that, and they always say a dirty seam is a, is a, is a good seam where they overlap that and there's an overlap.
Yeah.
And stuff, um, so I had another individual look at it to see if there was any separation. And he was in the paving business for over twenty years with Pike Industries.
I'll grab some pictures this week, I, I literally stopped and cut out, there are a couple of them that are an inch wide. And they're at least a half an inch or more deep. And they're completely full of sand. And. You know, and I'm sure that's where he. What he was using as his example, trying to apply to the entire road. Um, but in any event, we probably, even if we're not, it's not bad enough to do anything beyond that, we probably have at least crack seal it. So it doesn't fill up with water and really start separating the road.
Um, is that from your pavement and new pavement?
No, it's actually a brand new pavement, it's separated right at the, right at the seams.
Yeah, but it's sent down by Pine River.
No, but we in the bridge and Pine River Road, several areas where the.
Okay.
The cracks, there's one section by ten feet with the cracks like an inch wide, that's full of sand. Um. And I, and I didn't get out, check, see how deep it was, it was just like, okay, it's, it's definitely wide in sand, so it's. Obviously, it's big enough to hold in sand. Um, so I was just curious, cause I didn't know.
Yeah, so it's, it's always been the same language, so it's. And without having an R P in front of me, I don't think.
No, that's good.
Um.
Have, but have, I mean, have we? Is it a case we do anything about it or look at it or have them come and take a look at it or?
Yep, I can. If you guys want, I will certainly reach out to the contractor and say, hey, we have some concerns and meet with them and. See what he has to say, and depending on how that conversation goes. Um, you know, we can discuss it as a board and. Uh, no, an actual R P. This one here. Yeah, perfect.
Well, I then I drove Green Mountain, cause I remember the second or third year is when we started doing crack fill on the center scenes of that one. This area, on Green Mountain, we would already fill those.
Yeah, was it on the section next? We didn't put alcohol and let it sit for a year? For the crack ceiling, right?
No, it's all the way down at this point.
Oh.
So the further discussion is crack sealing and my. My. Select was common tonight, so. I know it's in here. Sorry, I'll, I'll find it, I'll find it.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I won't take everybody's time, but it, it is in the, it's in the R P. The uh, R P that I just wrote for option B for roads for next year, okay, see that one? Um. It's in that, within the rifle one, just not.
I don't think we got your updated one, Jim. We had the meeting.
I sent, I sent them to somebody and asked for the sparkle.
Now you say, I'm like, oh no, I should see it.
It's okay, don't forward it yet, cause I have to make a change, because I had to count driveways for driveway cuts. And I just put one and. Work in progress, but um, this thirteen, so.
That's my bad, I do remember him saying it.
Again, I'll, I'll find it, cause I, I just read that. The insurance is basically. The warranty is basically a year. Which we're still, we're still, we're well within that, so.
So you can probably get the paving company to come back and just.
Yeah, I'll Jeff, maybe have them come out and take a look at it.
Just get a analysis.
Thank you.
Any else?
Yeah, so um, crack sealing, I know we, I like to try to watch the budget, obviously we had a stolen event and we took some money from roads and stuff like that. Roadside mowing, I already talked to the contractor that we've been trying to hire for two years to do some roadside brush cutting and. And chipping and stuff, um, last year, we couldn't hire him because we needed to rob Peter to pay Paul, so we took from that line, if you will. Uh, because of the washouts and stuff this year, we had the uh, April second snowstorm that consumed that money. And some of the road money, so not knowing what Mother Nature's gonna bring this summer, we've had multiple conversations about the prediction of. Uh, the weather channel's prediction of storm events. So um. But having said that, Mike Kokolski uh told me, um, when he was. Out there on Green Mountain Road picking up brush, he noticed some. Perpendicular cracks all the way across the, the two-year-old pavement on Green Mountain Road. Uh, in the area of Canard's Mill, Canard's House. That's um. East of Ryfield Road, um, he noticed several different cracks that go all the way across the road, so. Obviously, that's brave new pavement, we want to address that. Um. So with you guys' agreement, I will reach out to. The contractor we've used, we always bought, we bought a pallet, that's how it worked, we didn't buy the pallet. I'm not sure that they still do it that same way, but I'll find out. Um, and. At least one other company. It's, you know, usually under the procurement policy, so it's, you know, that dollar figure, so. Um. And I'm gonna state again, I'm a firm believer that once it's spider web cracked, it's too, it's too far gone, um. I'll give you a perfect example. When winter started this year, I got several phone calls from people, friends and things like that, and they said, gee, your contract is. Got something going on with the truck, because you see the rubber on Townhouse Road. There was pieces of rubber on Townhouse Road, like the front tire was getting peeled off. And you see that when you win, you know, you put a lot of pressure on the tire, it was actually the. Crack sealant that was getting. Lifted, lifted, getting scraped right off. So that tells me that. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bash the company, um, but that tells me that there wasn't a lot of. You know, then embed down in the crack, it just kind of was like a band needle.
Yeah.
And it just. Got scraped right off the first time they plowed, so.
So they know, like, don't they know, like, blow the cracks? And then eat them before they go.
So um. So when, when you see them doing like Route sixteen and the highways and stuff like that. So they actually do a, they actually do a salt cut along the crack, and then they. Use high-pressure air, and then it's injected into the cracks, which is very, very effective. This process, it's just you have a crack and, like in Austin, we used to do it, I did it for years, and we had a drag box where you just heat up liquid asphalt. And you drag the box over the crack. And what went down inside is great. You know? Um. And it's not all of it did.
And they don't, we don't have a class.
Get injected into it, so. But I can reach out to companies that, you know, say, hey, how much of that, you know, do you blow the crack up first and with the wand and air wand and then, you know? Try to embed the crack sealant into it, but if you guys want, I mean, obviously, my opinion is we start with. Green Mountain Road, the brand, the newest pavement first, and then work backwards, um. It's again, on my road plan, my road idea, we're at the point now, Townhouse Road outside of the cracks. There are potholes, there's parts where the pavement's starting to break up, and um. That is gonna be needing a shim code, a shim and overlay, it's been released an overlay very soon. Um, we're, we're pushing. Twelve years, I believe, twenty eleven. So. Oh, so thirteen years. This first section like that, so.
Okay. Go forward, right?
Thank you.
Uh, I'll be short. Uh, Caitlin, Dave, Strauss and myself met Thursday uh last week. Finalized the R P for assessing contract that we're gonna put out for. Next year. For our next five years, contractors will be updated with the revisions, quick reviews and mail out to assessing contractors for bids. I think we're at what, seven, six? Contracts.
The companies?
Yeah.
Was seven.
Seven, yeah. So we anticipate mailing up. Out the week of June seventeenth.
Can you send, send me a P D up on that?
Yes, once the additions have been made, I'll send it over to you.
Please.
I do too. Uh, we hired, when we talked about that, we hired the part-time employees for a transfer station. Uh. Order has been placed for the shipping container for the transfer station, and it'll be delivered June eighteenth in the afternoon. I did uh. Go out and did the measurements with uh Mark as far as, you know, talking about putting it side by side, put a roof on it. And we did approximately eight feet, no way, because. Where it's gonna go. Waste management's not gonna get into the pickup, the.
Containers.
Yeah. So I can do four feet. I still can put, leave four feet in between the two containers, we'll have to push it, I don't want back, we can have that, it's pushing back or something like that. To the end of the pavement. We can do that, at least it can, like you said, it can throw some stuff in there. You okay with that?
No, yeah.
Alright. Uh. Yeah, that's, uh, we talked about the personnel policy, we met. On May thirty-first, to update. We would have talked about that here, so we met on uh, May thirty-first. Caitlin, Michelle, Andrea, the three of us, four hour meeting. Went through town personnel policy, very productive, uh, did a lot of, a lot of questions. And, you know, it's in process of getting updated. And where's some questions that we got that get answered first, so.
Correct.
Okay. Um, we updated investor policy, we done that, and uh. Last one, we uh, this, this miss uh, town boy uh, this week. Yes, this week. Oh, sorry. A town employee, thank you for correcting me. Uh, rephrase that. Uh. We uh, town boy gave us a notice for. Lived a town, um, that's assessing clerk. And basically. That's all I'm gonna say. I'm done. Thank you for correcting me on that.
Yeah, sorry, so I I have an additional item, if I can.
Please.
None of that, but you did the subject. So um, we talked about the flags at the library in here, we've updated the flags. And um, I replaced the one that I screwed up on the library, so that, that's done. Um, I would, coming out of planning board meeting the other night, we'll be talking about the light across the street, that light does light up. Doesn't provide any light over here whatsoever, this like this whole front parking lot, that that light, oh, everything's in pitch black. You can't see it, so I really think we ought to do a, a light for the flag pole.
So what's that like for, for, we can't see the front of the building?
Um, when you walk out and shoot you right in the eyes, but it really doesn't do much. It does provide, I mean, it puts light in the roadway area at the, at the turn of the entryway coming in that driveway. But beyond that, it has not, it doesn't shoot anything over here far enough to do anything in front of the building or. Or in the driveway here at all.
But we're, that's our light, that's.
I do not know the answer to that question. I gotta believe it is.
But what, as of, according to PSN H last year, that's our one, yes, it's on our list of. Street lighting that we pay for, so.
Yeah, so if we're gonna, why putting our light up and we're still paying for light, why don't we just move, pull, put a pole on this side, put a light up?
Well, I was thinking more doing kind of like a one-time with an LED light that's solar, and that way we don't have to pay electricity.
Does the parking lot have lights? Besides that went across the road.
We did have some on the building, but I don't know.
I think there's two right by the door.
They were not turned on the other night, so that was why I noticed it was in pitch black.
So they're not automated for a, for night time to come on.
Three or four years ago, they were motion activated, but they were not motion activated when I was, when I was here tonight, when we were here.
Were you standing still?
Pardon me?
Were you standing still? As a town building.
There was a whole bunch of block that night up, right?
As a town building, should the light be on all the time?
I would say yes. We should have something right out here.
So maybe we have an electrician issue, so maybe we should contact our electrician and. Have them put in the proper lights, full photo sense, so.
Photo sensitive sensor, yeah.
If I may, we have one out in our rear parking lot, it's a dawn to dusk motion activated that stays on all the time. But not even if anything goes in front of it, it lights the whole back of the building, a whole back. It's on, actually, it's on either staircase.
So you do have a light that stays on all the time?
Yeah, but it's like, it's dawn to dusk, only at night will it, it come on, so it's not on.
Oh, I'm saying, so that's still a motion light, I I don't think there should be a motion light, I think it should be a light, light. So, which is, yeah, let's just say somebody's driving by and they're trying to find this location, whatever they.
That's right.
You need to get someone to stay dim, and then when they are motion, they get brighter.
Yeah, that's, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Alright, um, I bet Caitlin. Show me a call, Jeremy.
Okay.
If I have issues, though, I know last time you got them and he called me right back.
If you want, I'd call Jim.
You want?
If he wants to stay that on, he's more than welcome to.
Yeah. I have no problem, just working with the videos. Uh. What can we do with the light on the street, we're paying for that?
Well, for as much value, the only value that it was is if somebody was turning into the driveway, on this side, that's it.
But we'll have lights up there.
Well, we'll have lights in the front building, so we don't need that one over there.
Can you? Well, let's get our lights up first.
And then contact everyone.
Figure out how to get rid of them. I think that.
And then the interns, we should get a solo light for the light pole.
Correct.
I would concur with that.
And I did have something else, I'm sorry, you just reminded me, sorry.
Treework, back and forth. Treework, so. Yes, so.
Wait, that, y'all, that.
Yeah, alright, so the, the um. This, the Smith Family Tree Service, they, they commit Sundays to us, Sunday was, you know, except for the afternoon for a couple hours of complete washout, so I, I didn't expect them to be out there. You know, it's dangerous enough as it is, well, being in the pouring rain, um, I did reach out to Dale and say. Um. You know, I get, I get, I get a lot of phone calls, text messages and emails about one tree in particular, just before the Austin Town Line on Elm Street, it's getting worse and worse and worse, it should be down. Is it down today? It should be down. Right, it was supposed to be addressed here. Hopefully, it was addressed this afternoon, it was supposed to be addressed this afternoon, and I, I came right here, so.
I'll go to the little activists.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, um, they were gonna, I I said, if you can't get to anything else, can you squeeze it in your schedule, just because it does, it. It's very precarious, so.
It was.
So, um, it's split, it's kind of scary, you know, makes people nervous, um. So, but the tree work continues. It's for the low-hanging.
You did get a list from the. These guys, the, where the trees are hanging.
Two on my list fell down in the last windstorm.
Yeah, so we had a conversation, okay, yeah, good.
Can I ask Chris a question, please?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Chris, are you, um, are you still taking uh suggestions of what trees might need to be come down?
Yes.
Are you aware, okay, not to be redundant, are you aware of the one that's right? On the corner of Great Road and the end of uh Green Mountain Road is dead, completely dead, but if you look up at it, that puppy comes down and has taken everything with it. Is that one of your trees?
Uh, they, so there is a lot of, I'm, right now, I'm referring to the ones that it kind of got compromised from the April second storm, didn't come down all the way.
Talking about the widow maiden.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're addressing right now, obviously, there's a lot of. Dead trees, and you you shake your head and you say, why didn't that one come down this time, you know, when the one.
Cause it had no leaves.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I'm I'm aware of that, and that's, you know, that would be on the list of, uh, to take down first, so, thank you.
Alright, Caitlin, please.
Alright, so, if you think I'm on mine, everything that I have was sent to Town Cloud, which is going to be our new website host. Um, waiting on them, but the new website should be launching very, very soon. Um. Still the same site address, of course, nothing would switch on that. Um, and it'll be a lot easier to navigate, everything's looking good, had the final walkthrough, and all links and everything are working perfectly. Um, had a discussion with Avatar today regarding um, the interim assessing clerk. Um, obviously, a lot of questions are coming about now that task force have come out. Um, we're planning on having the um, assessment from Avatar come out on the first Tuesday of the month. That way you can get in touch with the zoning officer too, for anything that needs to be updated into Avatar. Um, regarding hours, he'll be here, but still to be determined, I'll post on the website once that happens. For the meantime, any questions regarding um. Bills or assessing is to contact the Board of Slackman Office by email or phone, and all questions will get forwarded to Avatar's successor. Um, and he will be in contact with the person in question. Um. And tomorrow, we are meeting with MTS for an informational demo for finance software.
Thank you. That's good. Um, commentary boards, uh.
Well, it's copied up front, if anybody would like any. Uh, May was yet again another busy month. We handled four hundred and two calls for service, made three arrests, seventy-one motor vehicle stops. We had seven motor vehicle accidents, and the K nine and I were on five deployments, four of which were tracking, and one was a building search that ended up. With us arresting somebody that is not supposed to be there. Uh, and then a little blurb at the bottom, just for your own interest, is through May of last year, there were one thousand five hundred and nine calls handled. And so far through May of this year, we're at one thousand seven hundred and ninety-four, so we're up two hundred and eighty-five calls so far. And just another little blurb, in May of last year, we handled three hundred and sixty-three, so it was. The trend is still upward, it's just really getting busier this month, it's off to an extremely busy start for us. And it has not slowed down, I, sorry, I had to run out, I had to go handle a call. Uh. And then I provided the, the board of this, but I figured I'd speak on it. Um, over Memorial Day weekend, from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-ninth, which was Friday to Wednesday. We had our speed sign hung on Green Mountain Road just before Jack Russell Road. And it records obviously speeds times a day when those cars are going by and the total number of vehicles, and in that, that period. There were four thousand eight hundred and fifteen vehicles that were just heading. Well, south. Um, and the average speed through there was thirty-two point nine three miles an hour. So. Um, there's obviously. That was the average speed, there's obviously some that are, that are higher, but. Uh, most of the vehicles are within forty-five miles an hour and zero, and then there's a very minis, or smaller amount over forty-five. Which by the looks of this is just over five hundred vehicles were over forty-five miles an hour. So there was one vehicle that was upwards of between sixty-six and seventy miles an hour, or seventy-five miles an hour, and eight vehicles between fifty-six and sixty-five. I'm sure. So it's just that, it's another pretty interesting tool, just to see how many vehicles are headed one way on that roadway in just, just a few days on a busy weekend. Uh, and we're planning on deploying that all over town, just to get an accurate idea of, you know. Help us, excuse me. Where to be, when to be there, um, and so on and so forth, so it's just like, we, we can monitor different roadways and, you know, we can look at, like, okay. Every day, or every Thursday at four o'clock, there's seven vehicles that are going by there that are doing sixty, then we know, you know. It's a pattern of behavior, people coming up and weren't doing the same thing, we can enforce that that way. It's just another tool that we have to help us know where to be and when to be there.
It's always gonna be our case in pick.
Any questions?
What's, do you know that, off the top of your head, what's the highest call volume in a month we've had?
Without going, and I'm not sure, but I know that in the four hundreds is. Up there.
That's what I thought, that's what I heard.
So I know there was, I remember, I believe it was last year, we had one month, there was like a hundred and ninety-seven calls, I think that was February or last year. And so far. This year, I don't believe we've been below three hundred and twenty. Per month. But we're anywhere from that, above that, so. But we're, the trend is just doing this, and we're. I mean. You spoke about the car accident on Friday night, and the chief and I can both attest to it, Friday when that happened. There was, I believe, four or five other events going on just in Effingham at the same time, and we had to figure out who's going where, when and what to prioritize. Like, that's just simultaneous calls that required, you know, police and fire response that we just had to, luckily. It was just a, I was still here, because I was a bit busy during the day.
Right.
I'm gonna handle the Libby Road, I stayed at the accident, and then other calls are coming in. The chief had to divert from one call to come to this other call, it was. It was, it was pretty wild for a little bit, but that just seems to be our trend lately. In, in the town is when one thing happens, more than one thing's happened, and we have to figure out what prioritize.
I, if, if I may, I would like to. Give you guys credit, that it's not. So everybody's scared that, you know, the crime rate is, is exploding in the town of Effingham. I think good policing and a solid, very active police department is one of the main contributors to these numbers. You guys' involvement and you guys all being out there is one of the main reasons, and personally, I thank you for that, but I think that it speaks volumes, and I think that's a big part of it, too.
And I can speak on that too, just from the time that I've been here, the longer I, I'm here, the more that. The, the townspeople of Effingham call us, the more we know about what's going on. And that's just, it's because we're here, we're being active in the community, you see us out there, you know that we're out, so you're more likely to pick up the phone and tell us about something that. In the past, you were just like, yeah, whatever, you know, and, and thank you for that, because that helps us, that helps us know where to be and what the problems are going on. Because I, I mean, and I, I know when I first started to find a car into a tree and be like, I didn't call, because I didn't think anybody would show up, like, oh.
And I'll get itch marks and tell you something.
Thank you, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah. Obviously, the town of Effingham doesn't make money on these calls or anything, does it go to Carroll County, or does it go to the state?
All the tickets.
All the tickets.
The tickets go to the state. That's when we, when we're, the tickets go to the state.
Yeah, so I just, well, I'm sorry, I was talking to me. So I take this opportunity also to, I, I feel a complaint, uh, myself and the selectmen and Tyler were talking about it, a gentleman with a. Laying down rubber and things of that nature, um, going on in his neighborhood. Um. These guys. In any, any law enforcement, you have to catch them to do it, so. If you, not to sound redundant or ridiculous or whatever, if you see something, say something, don't touch stuff that potentially could be evidence, um. If you ever complain about something, call them two days later, it's, it's not that it's not important to reach out, I don't want to discourage people from doing that, but. They're more, it's more effective, and they can do their job more effective and. Potentially prosecute things if they notified right away, so getting the word out there, even if you think it's simple, they hear, that's what they're here for, so. Somebody spinning the tires, you can't go and, th- these guys can't go write a ticket, and he's gonna correct me if I'm wrong, you can't go write a ticket based on a rubber mark in front of somebody's house. Because they could easily say, oh, a friend of mine left it, he's an idiot, I asked him not to do that, but he did. Um, you actually have to catch somebody doing it. Um, so it's very important that you, you call when it's happening.
And we have. Popped them in the act, and people have gotten tickets for it, and we continue to be on more kind of board. So, but. Your neighborhood, you know what's going on a lot more than we do, because you're there, well, we pass you, you're right there, you know, you hear it, you see it, let us know, so at least then it's logged. With our dispatch, and so that way we can. We could, you know, focus again, time, date, you know, if it's a reoccurring issue, you know, every Friday night, this is happening. Well, then we can focus, like, okay, Friday at seven PM, I need to be here. You know, obviously, if I'm not responding to calls, it just helps us in our direct control, everything like that.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
Alright, so I didn't provide April stats at our last meeting, so I've got them all here for you. Um, April was our big storm month, so huge number of calls, we had ninety-nine calls for the month. For us, a pretty big. Of those calls, we had fourteen medical emergencies, fifty-one calls relating to trees or wires down. One service call, two motor vehicle accidents, three building fires, ten outside fires, one smoke investigation, eight welfare checks. And appliance fire, six fire alarms, and two would have not calls.
So it was like half of them were with the storm?
Yeah. It's a busy couple of days. Moving on to May, back to normal, twenty-four calls for the month. Of those eleven were medical emergencies, two tree or wire down calls, one smoke investigation, four motor vehicle accidents, four outside fires, one firearm and one vehicle fire.
What kind of vehicle was that?
That was a hybrid. Yeah.
It wasn't a Ford two fifty?
Is it his car?
No, I was just making a point, it was an electric car that caught on fire.
It did, it took a substantial amount of water to extinguish that fire, um, forty-five hundred gallons of water. When typically a thousand gallons is more than enough to extinguish.
And that put a lot of emissions and smoke into the air and the atmosphere to extinguish that fire.
Of course, it did. Mr. Chairman.
You said, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just have a question, maybe the two of you, I don't know. Um, so now that we have that new on the corner where the bank was, where people go and they hook up for their. Hybrid cars, in case of the disaster or whatever, I mean. Is there, are we prepared for that kind of thing?
I mean. It's been a hot topic lately, and um, we're actually looking at buying what's called an electric vehicle blanket. It's a large fire suppression blanket that we can cover a vehicle with, and it will help suppress the flames. Um, it does not extinguish them, the only way to extinguish them is copious amounts of water. Um, the biggest thing that blanket is good for is to keep it from spreading elsewhere and catching anything else.
Several stands there.
Right, or you, even if you're at home and it's parked right against your garage door, you know.
Might be a two of the most.
Right, you, you could have potential there, um, we're looking at buying that, we would be the first one in the area to buy one. They are about fifteen hundred dollars a piece, and they're one-time use. They are about fifteen hundred dollars a piece and they're one time use. We can bill as as part of the EMS billing and and talks we've had in the past, if we're set up for that, we can actually bill the. Vehicle owner's insurance for our fire response. So we could recoup that money potentially. Potentially, there's no guarantee of course, but potentially recoup that money. So it is a conversation. It is a conversation in the area. We're not the first to have one and I'm sure we won't be the last.
Yes, please go ahead.
Just for clarification, Vicky, would your main concern be whether or not there was one of those charging stations that came into Effingham? That would place multiple vehicles that were hybrids. In one location? Well, you 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 were using the new charging station and Austin as an example. So would your main concern be? You know, in the future, one of those potentially being in Effingham, a charging station? Okay.
Every town counts, every town. You know what I mean? We as Effingham. Are we prepared? I mean. If there are three, four times there. Hooked up at one time and this fire. They're gonna call big time other times. Are we? As a town of Effingham. Able to, what, I mean, will we be, we be able to respond? Would we?
Again, it's copious amount of water. So, you know, we we can come to the tank or we can bring copious amount of water and.
To make sure that I'll reply like this and take our taking care of them and then I'm putting themselves into.
Yeah, there's really not any. Our our typical turn up here will protect us from that fire, just as it would any other fire. So there's really not any concerns for the safety of the fire cutters. If the water's a big thing and and even when we had this fire on on twenty five, I called for two other towns. Pretty soon after morning, it was an electric vehicle and everybody gave me a funny look, but. We used all the water I called for. So you're right, it's it's gotta be everybody know. And it wasn't even full electric. It was just a hybrid.
Alright. Any additional questions?
So I've taken over the E nine one one addressing stuff from, uh, David. With that comes some software and some training that's coming up. Um, with that, I had some conversations with Caitlin and there's gonna be some software that I need to put on my computer. I need to get linked up with. The server here so that we can share files. Um, with that, I'd like to request the laptop and I know this is loaded, but. There is one spare that's not currently in use. Caitlin was okay with transferring that over. It is one of the library computers, one of it to the board is. Okay with that.
I don't have that available. Are you, we're still looking for something for Jim. Are you willing to let it go on election nights?
I I'd say you should take priority on that. I mean.
No, no, but yeah, I mean, you don't need it at night though, right?
Probably not.
That's what I'm saying. So you could utilize his, the laptop.
Oh, just during the elections.
Right, that's it.
Okay, yeah.
Ray said feel that there was additional available if we wanted to request an additional from them?
I already checked it today. There's one available.
So that's always an option too.
Well, I think at this point, because of what Caitlin and. MJP worked out, I think that'll work.
Yeah, I agree.
Jim's standpoint, um, we could always arrange that in laptops and library available whenever you needed it. And we could actually dedicate one to you if you needed it.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's really just during the election that.
Do you have special software requirements you have for anything or just?
No, we we run that on that.
You don't need security or anything like that or.
You have to dial into the state for anything?
No, no, not not like Carol, you know, Carol. That's all separate thing that moderator doesn't have to have.
So you're gonna get a lot of hard.
Um, and they're coming Thursday. Um, Caitlin is the alternate for E nine one now, but it was the alternate prior. Um, we're both gonna sit through training Thursday morning with the safe to figure out what we're supposed to be doing. So Thursday morning, we have that training. Um, engine three is out of service. They did fill its pump test when we did our annual pump testing. Um, set it in for diagnostics. They found that the impeller, which is the spinny part of the pump that actually generates the pressure. Was damaged by gravel that the truck took on. Unfortunately, it's a fire truck thing and there's no way around it. There's really no way to avoid it. It just happens and there's. Nothing you can do. Um, it is gonna be about a ten thousand dollar repair. They have ordered the parts. The parts are still two weeks out, so. For the rest of the month, the truck will remain down.
Money in the budget?
There is enough money off in the budget to cover it at the moment. Um, and we did have a discussion in the work section that if we get to a point as a budget becoming tight, we can work the trust fund to.
And we can, we still got six months to go. Yeah, you do have it here.
Yeah, we have.
I don't wanna tap the truck for the ones we need to, but. If we need to, it's a. Um, we did redirect our antique. Uh, the antique engine one that's been sitting in the back shed. We ganked it out of the shed last week, brought it out, worked it down. Cleaned it all up, um. My Tyler, Fire Department Tyler has been working diligently on that. The association has allotted some money to work on getting the thing running again.
Is that a town owned equipment or is that?
I believe it is town owned.
I heard something different.
It was always my understanding that the Firemen's Association owned that truck.
I know it's covered on the Primex policy and I know it's registered to the town.
Yeah, I was speaking to, I forget what his name was. He said that all you have is registration, which is legal enough because. Back, God knows when, where, if there ever was a. The plate, the first plate, I think, is still on underneath the other. So I mean, as long as you got the reg, you're good on that. That makes it legal enough.
So, go ahead.
The Firemen's Association has put forward some cash to get it running. Um, the motor's free and spins. It does turn with the starter, so it should be a pretty simple. Simple thing to get it up and running again, so. Um, yeah, so the goal is to get that up and running, be able to use it for special events and, um, the anniversary coming up as well. So. Talks for the future, um. The.
Fundraiser time.
That's all, that's all. The, uh, Heritage Fund has already expressed interest in just in setting up a fund to generate some donations to put towards the vehicle. So.
From a wording standpoint, I'm not sure.
Eric Jones thought it was possible.
Well, the here, the, from the Heritage Commission, the Heritage Fund. Yes, that's a likely kind of thing. We gotta still check it out. Um, and there were some questions on whether that would make it, but I think it would qualify for that.
And if it doesn't, we can utilize the fire department.
And there are, believe it or not, there are people that. You know, retired firefighters and stuff that love to throw money at this type of thing, so.
Yeah. I know we aren't done yet, right?
Correct.
But where are you gonna store this? You're not gonna put it back in it, Bill?
Uh, we currently, if if you're driven by, probably seen it, we've got a portable garage outside and it's in the portable garage at the moment. So we've got some.
As one of the three selectmen I support. You know, seeing that back on the road again, cause I'm probably dealing with what and that has been in that firing. I actually used to, uh, ride on that and like to share when the, when the firemen's muster and fireman's field day used to be held at the parade grounds. That's why it's called the parade grounds at Lawrence Hill, when there was only one fire station and they used to shut down the South Bow Lane of one fifty three. Between the fire station and the bandstand. To have Fireman's Field Day. And I have a picture on my wall at home of black and white. Good at all pictures go to use in the year, but. About me riding in that firing. And it was nineteen thirty nine.
Yeah, very cool. We definitely wanna get it back up and running. It's a good community engagement piece and there's definitely some news for it, so. Um, I have a new applicant. His name is John Bloom. He's twenty. He's a certified firefighter. He's looking to come help with some of the daytime open shifts. Um, I have his application. I'm waiting for his criminal background and driving history, looking for, I'm recommending him for hire. And looking for a motion to move forward pending the background and driving history.
Make a motion to. Hire for part time.
Thank you. As Chuck alluded to earlier, the gentleman did look at the fire station roof and provided an estimate on that. It's north of thirty thousand as well. Uh, complete roof replacement. They cannot get the same type of metal anymore. They can't get anything even similar to that type of metal and it's so well worn at this point. It's time for a full roof replacement anyway. Um, this is an insurance policy or an insurance claim. So he feels strongly that the insurance will cover a great portion. And FEMA will probably cover the rest because it's also storm related. He did. He offered to help getting it through FEMA. We still have a storm declaration for the April storm. We're still waiting on that, so. Hopefully that will be declared and. I saw that they got their declaration, but. There's potential that. FEMA money will cover that cost.
In the interim, we're not gonna wait to FEMA, that's for sure, but. Can we place a roof?
Right, right. So it's covered right now. It's watertight at the moment, so I'm not. Super rush, but.
We, I think we can wait another few weeks to get some a little bit more information. As long as we can something before fall.
Make sure there's declaration first and then go from there. It would be my suggestion.
Okay.
It's not leaking. We've, we've been keeping tabs on it, making sure the tar is actually covered still and everything else, so.
As long as we, you know, make sure the Primax bill is paid for a little time that keeps getting up on roof.
Yeah, he clocks out before he climbs up there.
Yeah, it's like fifteen, eighteen. It's not about the pitch, it's about the fall.
Um, on talking about the fire station, um. Chief Eldridge and I have been having some going discussions over the last couple of weeks about. The future and a public safety building of some kind. We know that's been a topic over the years. Um, we've been spitballing ideas about in addition to station two. Adding some administrative space onto the existing structure. To meet our needs. We feel it's a cost effective way that we could potentially move forward without looking at a several million dollar new building. Um, we'd like to develop a committee. And we'd like to get some of the public involved, some selectmen involved and then our departments involved. To work this, work this plan, discuss this, come up with the ideas. And work towards a presentation of the future as well as potential ground opportunities.
So you're looking at incorporating the police department down there? What's, what's how many acres here?
About what you can see.
No, I think it's more than that.
Cause there's the woods a little bit behind the septic system, but not much and. The right of the building, you can't even put an on video on it because you're touching the line.
So you can move to left and you have to just. Yeah, I'm I'm for it. I know.
He thinks getting, getting. Hopefully. Have at least half a dozen or more of the people with it.
The municipal too, I mean.
As far as.
I'd say wouldn't be sufficient of parking and stuff like that, so.
I think it would be states limited as far as that.
Yeah, what concerns. I'll leave my card up here for anybody to hear that's interested or that's listening or watching the meeting. If you want my email, Caitlin has it.
Did you, uh, did you get your answer? Did you get your answer? It's it's called safety building. Basically, like they said, I mean, we just don't have, we have the square footage of the building with. This office. Wouldn't, we would not have enough room plus the parking area. Not no parking area. This is not the discussion. We can still look at it when we do your.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that point, Vicky, should be part of. This discussion.
Right.
Because part of what you're looking at is looking, you've got a footprint, some of it's being used for septic in a building. But you've got additional part of the footprint that you you can use. What could you effectively put in there and meet all the requirements for parking and turning and all that other stuff? Um, it's quite frankly, too early to even say when you can do that.
I mean, this building is not going to. It should, probably shouldn't be now, but.
Okay, um, it's time for you to start that up.
Whenever, yeah.
So you two are a culture.
I, I would say probably we'll schedule a company. Be here and. Put it out there.
I would like to be involved as like the.
Yeah, I'll swipe it.
Absolutely.
If one of us or all of us show up, we're covered from that standpoint.
Okay, we'll communicate with Caitlin and work on a date then.
And then get it out there, uh, advocate and put it on their website. The new website.
And if you get, to start the discussion. You get people's reactions, if you can get some pictures. Of other. Buildings, whether they're in May or Hampshire, Mass, wherever they might be. That from a size standpoint would be similar to what you'd be looking at. It will give people something to take a look at and they will get a discussion started, pretty in shape for reacting.
For those that are aware, freedoms is kind of the layout that we're overall looking at.
But you're working with existing buildings, so that makes it.
Instead of coming through, rather than just sort of up in the air, react to it from a visual standpoint.
I forgot to make this during my report, but since all of you are here. Um, I switched to Hi Watch today.
Oh, okay. Vicky wasn't finished.
No, I'm good. I'm good. That was, that was a hand of mine.
I thought she was, I say question for you.
No, no, um, so for Hi Watch. I know all of you wanted to be involved. Looking July, I think we were just saying July twelfth. Which is a Friday. Um, to set a meeting with them. Discussion if it's here, it would be on the phone.
It would be on the phone?
No.
Or Leo had mentioned also going. To. There, which I will ask her when I talk to her, till they're called tomorrow. So I want your opinions on how you wanted to.
I don't want to phone here.
And I'd like to see the place.
They run a business in our town that is really. Putting a strain on services and that's, that's they can do with phone to friend? No.
Okay, so I'll, I'll reach out to her tomorrow and, um, let her know that we want in person.
And and to add to what Chuck said, I mean, I've, I've seen it unfortunately.
I've never been in the gate. I I'd like to, I want to just see what, what the place.
But you know, if it means going there, that's fine, but not, not as far as I'm concerned. Shoot, Mr. Chairman, I forgot one more thing on my report if I may. Yeah, I apologize. Uh, for the first seven hours of my day, I was sitting in here with the help of Grace, committing a, uh. Federal grant with the assistance of potentially if we are accepted hiring a. Third full time police officer for the town. So we submitted that and we're hopeful. I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is and when we may hear about it.
And that is a what grant?
It's called the cops grant. So we've been working on that pretty steadily for the last couple of weeks and we finally finished it up and. Submitted it today. So we're hopeful and. Their assistance is. Very great the first couple of years, which is really nice. So we're hopeful and their assistance is fairly great the first couple of years, which is really nice.
If we are successful in getting that grant. I would hope that history does not repeat itself and the town of Effingham turns it down only to the very next year. Fund it one hundred percent through the budget cycle, like they did in in back in two thousand or before two thousand.
Just a quick tidbit on that, it's the first year the federal assistance recovered seventy five percent of the total cost of that employee. Fifty percent this second year, twenty five percent the third, and then the fourth year if the town chooses to keep it. Uh it would be on on the uh on the municipality and the in and of itself. So.
It was just for the individual, I I can I ask direct? Is it just for the individual or would it be for his uh for his gear? And uh training and stuff like that?
So the cost would be the, it would be the salary, we weren't able to put in the in the gear unfortunately, but it would be the salary, the insurance cost, the town's portion. To cover an employee and all that. At full time, so it covers, it's all assistance with that portion over there.
That includes uh short, but you said it.
Yeah, it covers all the.
Retirement.
Retirement, insurance, social security. Uh all that portion that would be with on the time for an employee, it would, it covers that percentage each year. Through those three years. Okay, so we requested, I believe it was just under two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Right, business, um chainsaw donation, I'll let Chris jump on that one for me.
Uh yep, so the Winter Roads contractor, Elliot Edwards Construction and Concrete. Um asked for a meeting with myself and the two chiefs at the fire station a while back. And I I I apologize for not uh giving recognition for this much sooner, um. But they made a donation to the Firefighters Association and will. Going through all of the hubbub and everything else with the financial, I mean, the financing and stuff like that. For the fire department and the police department to buy battery powered chainsaws for the crews and for the fire department, given what happened. Um on the April second snowstorm, um just to give them, you know, a few more tools out there, but it was a donation. From our winter uh Winter Roads contractor. Do these guys wanna add to it?
On that note, um the battery chainsaw for the police department is in service, they've got it the other day, so they have their chainsaw up and running. Um for the fireside, we already had what we needed for chainsaws, so we actually are purchasing voltage detectors. That will allow us to test the power line and tell if it has voltage to it or not. Um we're not gonna make a habit of testing lines and moving them, but when it comes to life safety, if we need to move a power line. We can test it and make sure it's dead and move it out of the way if we need to for a life safety issue, so.
And the total donation was fifteen hundred dollars.
Thank you very much.
Vicky?
Battery powered chainsaw. So do we know like? So how long the battery lasts and?
They last forever. They do, no, seriously, so, don't, I have a, I have a battery powered chainsaw.
Replace them like that, I'm sure that's why.
Yeah, for a mile or use, they're gonna use them.
Yeah, so I've I've had a battery powered chainsaw for two years, I'm, it's an ego, I'm not giving them any props, I know this is. You know, being taped or anything, but it's an ego brand. Um I've had it for two years, I've used that a lot, I carry it in my work truck at work. It does still use bar and chain oil, so I just put that on the absorbent pad, I throw it on the passenger side. Uh the April second snowstorm, the storm the month before that in March where three limbs were down. Um I've charged my battery twice in two years, um. They are, they've come a long ways, Dewalt, Cobalts, you name it, they all make them. Um the batteries do last a long time. And again, these, it's not an everyday use thing, uh you're not gonna start a logging business and use one of these, but you probably could. I mean, you 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 realistically, you probably could, I mean, the the guys at first at work made fun of me in my chainsaw until they saw it work and they were.
We had purchased a Milwaukee prior, just I purchased it a day before the April storm started, thinking it was gonna be bad. And I used it through the whole storm.
Now we know.
So we're interchangeable, our batteries are interchangeable, things like that.
I could just add, I've had ego electric saws for a couple of years now. For the life of those batteries, it's a fraction of what you would pay for gasoline for all that, I mean, yeah, I I would say. It's probably a third, so if if even that much.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Not, okay, move forward, uh dog licenses. So I got a list of outstanding uh. I can say warrant for uh taxpayers that have have not licensed, unlicensed dogs. So I guess my understanding is we have to do the motion.
Am I on there?
I don't see or mean as a dog. But my understanding is basically you have to prove it, so they can submit. But make a motion to proceed with mailing out the legal, the notices to these.
Pass due dog licenses.
Pass due dog licenses.
Unbelievable.
Own favor?
I'm surprised by the number.
Just give your trigger.
I think it's a toll, I don't see it till. But summer, okay, but summer, uh some people have a couple of dogs. Over page, gotta calculate her. Ten pages.
Hundred and twenty.
And now, because they didn't pay him before the date, now that the fine attached to it and so on.
Well, a lot of them, you know, it's, it's not a hundred and twenty capos, you know, a lot of were two, you know, we have two dogs. And a lot of them probably died, the dogs too. So can I review your work cut out? Uh we have an application for outdoor uh event and uh Happy International Society. Let's see, the street fair. Yeah, looking for the date. Be August tenth. August tenth.
What we saw on T shirts and stuff like that.
Make a motion to approve the then for having a presentation.
And last one, we used to have a temper cut for Pine River State Forest. And looking at approximately a hundred and seventy one acres.
Where?
You can describe it, so. So you're in this area.
Wear and tear on that bridge? Maybe that's why they. That's why they were so quick to, if you don't wanna give us a grant to replace it.
Collapsed the bridge, uh the bridge, the culvert, so they know how to replace it.
No, that's not how it works.
They'll close the road, yes.
So, Chris, can you throw up some uh signs? At a time?
It's a culvert, so it's not a bridge, so it's. It's an E tube, so. Think there, I think it's already been posted, so.
I don't recall seeing one, but maybe.
It's not gonna affect that road anywhere.
Hundred seventy one.
That's how much they're gonna cost?
Yeah, but that Pine River is probably what, five thousand acres, four thousand acres there?
Oh, by the state forests there.
Yes, it's like five thousand acres.
Between Clock Road and Molly Furwick Road.
Oh, alright.
It's actually in the area of the. Port five.
As I said, we've cleared about twenty five acres already.
Are we good on that? Alright, announcements, uh Board of Selecting's meeting scheduled for June twenty fifth will be moved to June twenty fourth on a Monday at four o'clock. Maybe four. Uh the Board of Selecting will hold a public hearing June, June twenty fourth. Twenty four at five o'clock to accept unanticipated funds from the state of New Hampshire, in an amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Two of the moon play grants pieces.
Alright, public comment. We're gonna go into a non-public?
We make a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety one A colon three two C legal.
Make a motion, we uh. Make a motion, come out in non-public.
Second.
All favor? Make a motion to adjourn.